glitches again between audio and video, but I think we're in good shape now. So, so I guess we'll get started. And I'll call the meeting to order. It's seven minutes after seven, according to my clock here. And are there any additional items to add to the agenda?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Tiffany Warden.
The only, the only one I guess I would like to add was, uh, just maybe the, um, the meeting for the Islandwide Garbage Initiative. Maybe if we could just cover some of the, uh...
An island-wide garbage initiative?
Yeah.
Okay. Is our councillors okay with adding that item to the agenda?
Yep.
Yep, I'm okay as well. Okay, great, so we'll add that item. Are there any other items to add? Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second or...
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. So, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Contrary-minded, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, so now is review of our minutes from May 10th, 2021. Those were circulated in advance in your council packages. Are there any errors or omissions to report on those? Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 10th, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 10th.
Thanks Tiffany Warden. Could I have a second or on that?
I'll second that, Melanie.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. So, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion carried, thank you. All right, that brings us to the presentation part of our agenda. So, first up, we have Sean Lucre, Director with Cape Breton Island and Eastern Mainland Housing Authorities. So, welcome Sean, thank you so much for joining us today. I'm saying welcome Sean, but I don't know if I see him on the screen here. I'm scrolling through my list of people. Yvonne, do we have Sean with us today?
I haven't seen him coming in yet.
Okay.
I saw him in.
I thought I did.
I thought I saw him coming in the beginning.
Uh... I'm sure you didn't see Sean Gess, because I think councillor Sean comes in as Sean Gess. Yeah.
That might have been it.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Okay. All right.
He's not here yet, but he did email me in the last 15 minutes and said that he was going to be joining. So, I don't know if you wanted to swap up the order of them or...
Yeah, for sure, yeah, we'll do that, okay. So, thanks Yvonne for that, that suggestion. So, that brings us to Adam Malcolm regarding ecological considerations. So, welcome Adam, thanks for joining us this evening and you're still on mute. So, I'll just, yeah, recommend you say hello. Is our audio working okay?
Hi everyone, can you hear me?
We can, so over to you Adam, thanks for joining us.
Great, thanks very much. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that here on Unamagui, more commonly known as Cape Breton, we're living on the unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq. Uh, thank you Warden Mumberkett and thank you Richmond County Council for inviting me to speak this evening about the state of biodiversity in our area. There were a lot of things I'd hope to share with you that I won't have time to cover. I wanted to talk about and show you some of my observations of local species decline over the past 40 years. I'd hope to hear some of your observations and stories from your parts of the county too. For me, there are a lot of species that I encountered regularly as a kid in and around river inhabitants that I no longer see at all. And that's despite spending more time on the river now than I did then. American eels, Atlantic salmon, gaspereau, frostfish, bank swallows, barn swallows, little brown and northern maiotus bats, to name a few. And many others that I once saw regularly in the summer that I now see only seldom. Mud suckers shipped below the culverts of the road. I wanted to say something too about a couple of local species that are doing better now than a few decades ago and what it took to put them on a better footing. Efforts that mostly happened outside of Canada, but that we've been... I'm just putting on my timer here because I forgot to do that. Um, and benefited from all the same. I wanted to talk a bit about my parents' experience and their parents and their grandparents' experience of having their home villages of Point Tupper and Port Malcolm flattened 10 or so years before I came into the world in the name of regional economic progress. And what parallels I see between what happened back then and what's happening today with industrial-scale residential land raised to help illustrate the point that small communities of people, like wildlife, human homes, like rivers, like forests, do not have the right to a healthy existence in this country. They do not have the right to exist at all. But the full presentation would take too long, it would take a bit over an hour. So, instead, I'm putting the full thing up on YouTube and I'll gladly share the link with anyone who's interested in watching. This evening, I'll briefly discuss two parts of the presentation. Local causes of species decline and grassroots-led solutions, including an idea that the late Silver Donald Cameron called "one of the most exciting ideas he'd ever encountered." The central message of my presentation is this. We are right in the thick of two interrelated crises. The crisis of biodiversity collapse and the crisis of climate warming. Among Nova Scotia's 18 counties, activities within the municipality of Richmond are contributing an outsized proportion to the exacerbation of these crises. To my eye, the provinces and federal government's efforts to tackle these problems are completely inadequate. The Nova Scotia Department of Lands and Forestry's Wildlife Division is doing its best to improve prospects for our 63 provincially listed species at risk. But they have a staff of six people for the whole province, six, and about a dozen teams of volunteers working on individual species. And I should note, the total number of species at risk in the province is in fact considerably higher than 63. No one is affected by the declining health of the local environment more than the local people themselves. We drink its water, we breathe its air, we eat game and fish and berries that grow from it. In a very tangible sense, we are it. What long-term harm is done to our local environment ultimately is done to us. I want to suggest that we could be doing much more at the municipal and island regional levels to help and that Cape Breton's bands, municipalities and individual communities, the people. We need to put our heads together to come up with a workable strategy. We need to do this, not for ourselves, not even necessarily for our species on the brink, but for the generation of Cape Bretoners who are just now coming into the world and who stand to inherit a climate that is more and more unstable and a biotic community that is more and more diminished. So, I'm just gonna dive right in here and show you a few things. Something I want to put on your map, oh... is a few tree diseases that are on the way. The two of them are on the mainland right now. I suspect we're not going to see what we would really need to try to stop these diseases. First of which, this is an image, can you see my presentation, by the way?
Uh, we're looking at a slide that says elm stump photo.
Oh, really? That's what you're seeing?
Yeah, it's telling me we're viewing Yvonne Woodrow's screen though. I'm not sure who's sharing, if it's you or her.
Adam?
Yes.
I just gave you privileges to share your screen.
Okay.
So, if you want to share your presentation?
Yes, okay, here we go. Very sorry about this, I didn't realize.
Oh, no, that's okay. All right, we had our share of technical difficulties trying to get started too, so it's all good.
Oh, I see, I've got, I go into my system preferences, allow this to happen. Did something happen?
Yvonne just stopped sharing her screen, so you should be able to share yours now.
Okay, here's hoping. Hmm.
Adam? Adam?
Yep.
Um, it's Yvonne. If you go down on the bottom, do you see at the bottom where it gives you the opportunity to share your screen? If you have the document opened on your computer and you click Share Screen, you should see it and be able to choose that presentation.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Okay.
I'm clicking on it, hitting, oh, there's another one now. I think it might be requiring me to close everything out.
Trust me, I feel your pain.
I'm really sorry guys.
No, I listen, it's okay.
This is my second meeting in a row. It hasn't been working.
Is it the same presentation that I have, Adam?
Uh, it's, I've added a little bit to it. But essentially, yes, if you want to throw that up and I can just direct you to the main, the main spots.
Okay, perfect.
But I think I might actually be, on my end, it looks like I'm sharing my screen.
Yeah, it's sharing, but only, only in your, it's not sharing on the, with everybody.
Okay. Okeydoke, so what can you see now? I see me.
How do you see it?
We see your, we see your presentation, yeah.
Oh. How do I get back? Oh, stop screen sharing, try that, okay. So... What do you see now?
I think your slides are numbered, so if you're able to tell Yvonne what slide you need to go to, that might be our best bet.
Uh, how about I just, I'll tell you a couple of things about what I wanted to say just about what's coming. Uh, I hope, I do hope you might check out the, the full presentation that I'm in the process of uploading. So, there's a few tree species. Uh, there's one that's on the island already. Uh, our beech trees, which are really important to wildlife, are in a lot of trouble. Uh, and it's here already. Uh, but we have two more species on the way. And my fear is that the province isn't really going to be serious about trying to stop these diseases from getting onto Cape Breton Island. And I would like to see an effort from the island to try to stop some of them from getting here. The Emerald Ash Borer, I think we have the least chance of putting a halt to at the causeway. The prognosis from the Department of Lands and Forestry is ash is a dominant species in our sort of upland hardwood forests. And the prognosis is that in the next 10 years, the province, province-wide, we're going to lose more than 90% of our ash trees from the Emerald Ash Borer. Um, and there's a second, there's a second disease that's affecting our hemlock trees called Hemlock Wooly Adeljid, and it moves a little more slowly. Uh, our hemlock trees are a foundational species of the Acadian forest. In my opinion, probably our most magnificent tree. They live six or 700 years, given the right conditions. Extremely important to wildlife. Uh, if Adeljid gets in, gets onto the island, we're in a whole world of hurt as, as far as what the cascading effects are going to be for our wildlife. Maybe we could go to local causes of species decline? Are we there?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
Yvonne, could you advance the slides a little to the local causes? Okay, so it says the causes now.
Okay, and, and bring us to the top left picture?
Yeah.
Yvonne is using the PDF, so she's not using the Prezi link, which I think is how you get to that information. So, I think that's why we're not able to see it all.
I'll just tell you a few things. So, the Point Tupper generating station burns 400,000 tonnes of foreign coal annually. Uh, and according to pollutionwatch.org, the Point Tupper generation, generating station, this one station produces a whopping 10.7% of Nova Scotia's air pollution, including hexa-chlorobenzene and mercury. Uh, and if you're curious about what these can do to human health, I'd encourage you to look it up. And I, I think it's worth mentioning that in the coldest months of the year, when, um, energy demand is highest in the province, Il Madam is more or less directly downwind of the smokestack. Now, uh, in 2018, the federal government finalized regulations requiring all Canadian coal-fired plants to close by December 31st, 2029. However, under Nova Scotia's equivalency agreement, coal may be used here beyond that date. And no retirement date has yet been set for the Point Tupper plant. I'm not cool with that. The next, the picture next to the Point Tupper, uh, generating station shows the Point Tupper biomass plant. So, the idea behind the biomass plant is that this is a sustainable way for us to get off coal. So, this is one of the ways that we're... We've been told that we can sustainably continue burning things and pouring carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. When the idea was pitched to the public, we were told that, uh, the biomass would be coming from, um, and things like that. But as late as 2015, according to Nova Scotia Power's own numbers, 76% of what was burned in the biomass plant came directly from our forests. So, the idea... Uh, oh, and I should say, 700, up to 750,000 tonnes of Nova Scotia's forests are burned annually in that plant or 50 tractor-trailer loads of wood per day. Calculated savings of burning biomass rather than coal rests on two false assumptions. First, that the carbon released when the wood is burned is recaptured instantly by new growth, which is not the case. Uh, in fact, the biomass plant releases more carbon dioxide from the smokestack than the coal plant next door. Uh, and it'll take anywhere from 50 to 100 years for us to recover, um, that, um, carbon by new growth in the forest. And I would argue that's time we do not have. And second, uh, the second assumption is that the wood being burned is waste that would have released all the carbon dioxide naturally when it rotted away. But in reality, much would have stayed in and become soil. Yeah, you can't, you can't really see what I want to show you, so I think I might just... What, what else should I talk about? I'm really concerned about the scale of clearcutting. There are all kinds of clearcuts up in the southern highlands, over across. And this is all happening, this is all companies within Richmond County that are doing this. And I understand it's not really within the county's jurisdiction to, to deal with these matters, but that's kind of, it's more or less exactly what I want to talk about. So, I'm just gonna say a little bit about solutions before I'm to wrap up. Again, you can't see what I'm looking at, so it's really hard. I'd like to put an organization called the Climate Caucus on your map. Uh, the Climate Caucus is a, it's a group of locally elected representatives across the country who acknowledge that up to half of Canada's carbon pollution is influenced by local policy decisions. So, they're kind of putting their heads together and coming up with strategies to work on, on bringing emissions down at the municipal level. And the name of that organization is the Climate Caucus. I wanted to show you a little bit of what the, all the land development is doing in our area, doing to Brookes by muddying the water and even fish from being able to to live in the river and be healthy, uh, but I can't really show you that. What I will say is this, um... In 2012, Silver Donald Cameron learned in an interview with activist and lawyer David Boyd about, uh, the Rights of Nature movement. And this is kind of what I just want to put on your map today. The Rights of Nature movement, uh, is essentially, that what, what it's not about is local groups, bands, municipalities, towns, et cetera, asking the province, the federal government or corporations for a little more say in matters of local environmental abuse or stewardship. It's about recognizing that our own health and the health of the local environment are one and the same and asserting the right to protect ourselves and especially our younger generations by protecting our environment and challenging any entity that would seek to deny us this right. So, I've talked to East Coast Environmental Law. I've had them, uh, present a memo that I'm happy to share with you guys if you're at all interested about what feasibility of pursuing Rights of Nature legislation are at the municipal level. Other ideas I have involved, um, you know, using some of the land tax windfall from all the land development going on and, um, buying land to protect. There's very little protected land in our county. The idea of protecting 13 or 14%, and I don't even think we're at that level in the county for wildlife and having all the rest for, as public land to be clear-cut over and over or private land to be developed, doesn't leave a whole lot of room for the rest of nature. And there's a whole bunch of organizations that think if we were serious about, um, trying to, where we have this opportunity as an island, it would be great if, if Cape Breton Island Assembly, Assembly. And I'd love to see more, um... Just more integration of the different, uh, the counties and, and bands on matters of environmental harm and sustainable sustainability. Uh, so P2PAC is another organization that I really like, really like what I'm hearing about what they're doing. Yeah, it's, it's hard to present when I can't really show you my presentation. So, maybe I'll just leave it there and I'm going to share, uh, the link to my presentation as soon as it's fully uploaded on YouTube. And I, I really hope that if you're, if anything I've said is at all interesting to you, that you'll check it out. And the last thing I just want to mention, and I'm going to, I don't know if I can, but I'm gonna try to put it in the comments. Our organization, the Atlantic, uh, sorry, the Rights of Nature, Rights of Nature, uh, excuse me, Rights of Nature Network, Atlantic Canada on Facebook, uh, is hosting from tonight to tomorrow night, a screening of the documentary called Invisible Hand. It's put out, the executive producer is Mark Ruffalo. Uh, and at the end of that, so you can go on to the Facebook group and you can register to watch it for free online. And then tomorrow at 7:30, there's going to be a question and answer with, um, people or community organizers from the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund about generally answering questions about the Rights of Nature movement, what it's all about, what its feasibility is. And I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks Adam. Um, and you know, again, thanks for being a trooper through, through these technical issues, so I appreciate it. Um, are there any questions from council for Adam? All right, and I think we've got lots of information there to review as well, Adam. You know, so if there is any follow-up, we can certainly get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you. I hope this is just the beginning of a conversation.
Sure, yeah, for sure, okay, thanks a lot, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
I'm looking in my list of participants and I don't think I see Sean Lucre online yet.
Nope, he's not here, Amanda.
Okay, thanks Yvonne. Okay, um, so if that's the case, then maybe we'll proceed with our agenda. And if Sean is able to join us, um, then we can maybe interrupt our, our schedule and I'll make time for his presentation, because I was certainly looking forward also to hearing about the housing authorities. Um, so we'll move on then to the items on the agenda. The next one, I have several items to discuss this evening. Um, so I'm gonna ask for your patience as I work through them, it's a bit of a list there. Um, so the first one is just a mention of the municipal office reopening plan for the public. And that has been publicized on our Facebook page. It, the, the office did open to the public today, first day, which is great news. We're seeing our COVID numbers reduce across the province and even here in the eastern zone. Um, and I just want to reassure the public that staff have prepared and implemented a plan for employees to return safely to the office. Um, and there are measures put in place to protect the safety of both employees and the general public. The municipal building is opened today to allow for counter-payment processing only. So, anyone wanting to enter the building for any other purpose will require an appointment. And so, we would encourage, um, you know, if you, to get in touch with the employee via telephone, email, or regular mail, whenever possible. Um, there will be instructions in the building, so, and you probably if, are familiar with them already, you'll see a sign requiring wearing of a mask and sanitizer and whatnot. And the number of people inside the building will be limited at any, at any given time. Um, and I would encourage the public to just continue to use those various methods of payment for property tax, water and sewer. Um, you know, you can do, you do your payments through online banking, going to your bank branch or by mailing a cheque. And give us a call at the municipal office at 226-2400 if you need help with any of those options. And I just wanted to say a thank you to all the residents for their continued patience as we move forward in a safe manner for everyone, but also a special thanks to the CAO for his leadership on this matter, so thank you very much, John. Any comments or questions from councillors regarding the reopening?
For me, for me, Warden Mumberkett, I had one resident reach out to me and, and ask, uh, you know, again, these, these are uncertain times. Uh, these, these are our times, hopefully that we won't see ever again in our lifetime. But I had one resident ask me, like during the closure of the municipal office, what the chances would be if, if council and staff could discuss the possibility of like a drop-off slot during, you know, late hours or during the night or almost very similar to what you would have seen at Canada Post in the past. You put your envelope in a slot, it goes inside the building and it's there for the next morning, right?
Yeah.
Oh, again, that's, that's, yeah, that's a discussion for later on, but I, I thought that, you know, that might be, you know, an idea that, that we could look to in the future if ever something like this pandemic ever happen again, right, where the building is closed.
Yeah. Okay, thanks councillor Sampson. I, I, it's an interesting idea for sure, everything old is new again, right?
Yes.
Any other thoughts or comments from councillors? Okay. All right, so next item on the agenda is regarding the publishing of the funding contributions from the previous fiscal year, 2020, 2021. And just to provide a little background on that, um, you know, as I'm sure councillors are aware, the MGA, the Municipal Government Act requires that we have a policy in place that requires the municipality to disclose to the public a list of any recipients of grants made by the municipality and the amount of those grants. That in, in the last fiscal year, 2020, 21, there were technically no grant applications as such. And the budget line item was at zero for those, zero for those types of applications. However, there were priorities of council funded such, such as those presented to us by the CAO and the CFO in our, in our funding contributions list during our budget deliberations. Uh, these were strategic investments of the previous council, many of which we also supported in our budgeting process. So, although not technically funded through a grant application process, I guess at this point, I would like to hear council's opinion on publishing these contributions as, as per the requirements of the... I guess at this point I would like to hear council's opinion on publishing these contributions as, as per the requirements of the MGA. So I would just open that for discussion for councillors, if you think we should go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Why not? It gives people a bit of a better idea where, where a lot of these, these contributions went to and the discussion, no problem.
Okay, thanks councillor Sampson. Any other comments or thoughts?
I do. I'm just, as we're talking, I also have no problem with it. I think it's a great idea, agreed. It's taxpayers' money that's going to these organizations and they should know sort of where the priorities lie in terms of those. I'm, I'm wondering if, if it might be relevant for us to also publish the organizations that receive grants in lieu from us as well for their taxes, for their property taxes. Because again, that's although not technically a grant as such, because they're covered under a bylaw and that's why their taxes are basically balanced off. It may also be good for constituents to know all of the non-profit organizations and other organizations that are receiving grants in lieu for their property taxes.
Yeah, that because it is another form of financial support that the municipality provides.
Yeah, it is. It's a fairly large one, so.
Yeah. Councillor Sean.
Yeah, for sure. To agree with councillor Sampson's. Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, for me during the budget deliberation, so you would have heard me say many a times for us to increase taxes or for us to put rates up, we have to be able to justify where the taxpayer dollars are going. So for me, the more you justify it, the more transparent it is and the more people can see where their money is going. So I am in total agreement with all that.
Okay. Deputy Warden, did you have any comments on that?
No, but I'd be happy if I could get my computer fixed.
Okay, would you be in agreement with publishing those contributions?
I would, yeah, a hundred percent. I mean, it's, it should be public, public knowledge anyway, so I guess, one hundred percent.
Okay, I have a quick question for you, for Don. Regarding publishing the organizations that we provide a tax exemption to as per councillor Melanie Sampson's suggestion, you know, would there be any difficulty in getting that information together in a timely manner to put out to the public?
No, that would be a problem. It would be based on last year's numbers, obviously, year in March thirty first, twenty one, right? So, yeah, we could, we could do, we could include those as well. We would be looking for some sort of a motion from council. We, we would also want to include both. So the funding contributions that were listed as well as recipients of bylaw fifty six.
Okay.
Now, bylaw fifty six contains a whole host of different categories. So if you wanted to exclude municipal properties, you know, we could do that. I mean, if you wanted to just include the businesses themselves, the commercial businesses and those not legislated by the, by the MGA, for example, water utilities.
Right.
Specifically state, state that water utilities can be, can be exempted and we include them on bylaw fifty six. We wouldn't post those.
Right.
Right, yeah. And I don't think you would need to, CEO. I, I think you're on the right track there. I think for, for the benefit of the public, yeah, it would be just the NPOs, the non-profits, the charitable organizations that that we would be interested in letting the people know, you know, who's, who's getting a tax exemption with.
So, so last year we did it on our website. Now, if you wanted to do it in the local newspaper, I'd probably want some clarification on that when you did the, when you would make the motion.
Right, okay. So would it suffice then, we would probably eliminate those, those ones you were speaking about, Don, if the motion kind of was worded that, you know, any nonprofit organizations external to the, to the municipality?
Okay.
That would probably cover, I think, those internal municipal properties and the water utilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I think then it sounds like we're looking for a motion that to publish any grant or funding contributions, grant funding and tax exemption contributions for nonprofits external to the municipality for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Does that make sense?
We might want to reference bylaw fifty six, I think, as per Don's suggestion.
Okay, well, would we still need to do that though if we, if we said any nonprofits external to the municipality? Or it doesn't matter, we, you know, however you'd like to word it, I guess.
I'm just thinking about, there would be, are there some that are charities versus nonprofits? Like it's the chicken egg, you know, are they, I think, I think the gist of what we're trying to do is, is exactly what you're saying. I just want to,
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how we could say that it would be clear. And I think we also need to, to Don's point, determine whether or not we want to just publicize it on our website and then in our social media, or do we want to actually publish it in the newspaper?
You know, and, and an option there would be to publish in the newspaper a place where people could go and look at the list. Because it, with, with the tax exemptions, it is going to be a lengthy list, right? Yeah.
Yeah. And then maybe in the reflections of Richmond, we could do something there. Just thinking out loud.
So, yeah, I think you covered, I think you covered well stating bylaw fifty six. If you, you may miss some if you state bylaw fifty six as opposed to if you state, you know, any grant funding and any tax exemption, you know, nonprofit, you know, outside of municipal properties, be listed below.
Okay, any other thoughts from councillors on how that could be worded? Okay, so, and so it looks like the wording we're tracing here is that we would publish grant funding and tax exemptions made for nonprofit and charities external to the municipality. And we will publish that information in full on the web, social media, and place ads in local newspapers to, for people to access the detail. Does that make sense?
Yep, that sounds good. I saw move that motion that you just read.
All right, thank you, Deputy Warden. Can I have a second around that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thanks councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion on that item?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. All right, thanks, everyone. Okay, so I'm going to move us on to the next item on our agenda, which is related to Pride Month. So the month of June is Pride Month. And it obviously looks a little different this year, but we're still, there are still opportunities to celebrate and share stories and, and to learn from each other. I wanted to make a special shout out this evening though to the St. Peter's Pride Richmond Rainbow Alliance for shining a bright, beautiful light on pride-related issues and opportunities in our communities. And I also wanted to mention that two one one Nova Scotia has resources available and you can access them by visiting them on the web at ns dot two one one dot C A or by dialing two one one on your telephone. And they have community resource navigators who are there to help. So I just at this point wanted to open it for discussion of council regarding maybe some opportunities to acknowledge this month. You know, we've seen some municipalities do flag risings, some social media, et cetera. So this is just an opportunity to discuss potential ideas for recognized Pride Month.
I mean, for me, for me, Warden Murricat, I think you, you said the word there, awareness. You know, we all have to bring awareness here. And when you talk about pride, you know, you should have a sense of pride of where you're from. You should be proud of the way you were raised. You should be proud of your community, you know, you should be proud of, of your achievements and your goals in, in life. But more importantly and most importantly, you should be proud of who you are. So this is a very important month and, and we should embrace it for sure.
Thanks councillor Sean Sampson. So any other thoughts from council on comments or potential actions to take, et cetera?
Have we, have we chatted with, with the staff at the municipality just to see what kind of events they may have planned? You know, I, I'm always interested in discussing what we could do, certainly as a council, but I think, you know, as a county, I, I just would be interested to know if we, if we've just checked to see what they're already doing.
Yeah, so I don't know, Don, if you have any information to provide. I know you and I chatted about, like, I don't think the, the county has ever done a, a pride flag raising. We talked about that, but we didn't really talk about any other planned activities.
No, we, we don't have a flag and we haven't flown any in the past. Certainly would be something for our, our bylaw policy meeting for including our flag flying policy.
Do you know if there's any activities or, or anything planned by staff, or is that something maybe you could come back to us to find out if?
I could check. I, I, the only thing I would think of is anything within the recreation department through perhaps the reflections. See if there was anything in there. I could, I could check with, with Lourie and get back to council on that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I mean, I think, you know, I would be interested to see if they have anything planned or, or, you know, but, and if not, then I would certainly say for myself, I, I would, I would really encourage that to happen because I do think, I, I would agree with councillor Sean Sampson's comments, you know, love of yourself is what's most important and being yourself is what's most important. And it doesn't matter who you love, it just matters that you love. And so I think as a county, my feeling is that we should be supporting that and encouraging people to be themselves. And so, you know, if we're, if we're not doing anything, I think perhaps as a council, we could send the message that we do want to be doing something as a county.
I like the idea of putting that into our, you know, where we spoke about the policy for the flag policy and maybe putting that into there going forward that we, you know, we, we have that normally set up for, for going forward.
Okay. So that policy won't be adopted until probably the fall, just because of the timing of things. I just wanted to make sure people were keeping that timing in mind. Deputy Warden, did you want to chime in? Don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Technically, technically challenged there this evening.
It's, no, I guess like councillor Brent said, you know, it's something that we definitely want to look at as the, possibly the flag, but again, you know, and no disrespect at all, but I did hear with caution, considering that there's many flags that people are wanting us to fly. So we just have to, you know, and I have no disrespect to flying the, you know, the pride flag or anything else, I just, but, but again, you know, enunciating councillor Sean Sampson's comments, yeah, and councillor Melanie that, you know, one, I think one of the biggest things is to stay in pride, you know, stand proud and, you know, don't be, don't be hiding behind the walls, I guess. It's, it's great. I mean, forefront and honesty is the most important, so bring it open to the open.
So I know councillor Melanie Sampson, you mentioned about, you know, council wanting to see something happen. I, I don't know, Don, you know, if staff would probably appreciate some clarity around that, or do you want to come back to us with some suggestions or what would, what would make life, I guess, what would make, bring that clarity for staff?
Probably unlikely that we would be able to order a flag and get one in time to fly it, but we could, I could check with Lourie, see, like I say, if he's made any, many, made any connections on, on the reflections. If not, or, or perhaps he's placed something on our website, or someone has placed something on the website. I, I don't know, actually, I'm not sure if there, there's been anything placed. So I can check and I will, I will check tomorrow and get back to council in the coming days.
Okay. Yeah, I know, it takes maybe a couple of days to order a flag in from Flag Emporium. I just know that from past experience. I've been ordering flags for stuff, but yeah. So, so do you require a motion from council then? I just feel like we're not providing very much clarity and I, you know, I know we've got limited options there around social media, like whatever the heck, whatever it is. Would you require some additional clarity or emotion of any kind, Don, or are you comfortable with that discussion as it is?
Yeah, the only problem with the motion is that it would only get, it would only get passed in at the end of the month. So if there's anything that council feels we need to place maybe on our website or on our Facebook page, we could, we could try to, you know, put something together and, and place an ad. Normally when there's, when there's recognitions like this, you would normally get a request from the reporter or things like that. So and then we would go ahead and, and agree to participate in an ad that would recognize a particular day or month or week or whatever. But I don't, I don't think we get anything from the reporter on this topic.
I think if we could go ahead and do something, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, yeah. To start at least now, like you say, on maybe the county website and the county Facebook page, that would be, you know, that's a start anyhow, we'll work from there.
It was exactly what I was going to say. What I would suggest is that we ensure that it already may be in the works, but that we ensure that we at least have something on our website and at least something on our Facebook page, and that we make every effort we can to access and raise a, a pride flag in the absence of our policy. So that at minimum, those would be sort of the, the three things I would see us requesting that could happen in the next little bit. With, again, the recognition that we would be perhaps looking for something a bit more in years to come. Because I would, I would like to see more done than a post and a raising of a flag, you know, so I'd, you know, I'd like to see, and maybe the recreation committee could discuss, because I think it would fall in that, you know, because that department is recreation, leisure, and community relations, right? So I think this is certainly a community relations event. And so, you know, perhaps to ask, to ask the manager to sort of come up with ideas of what could be done perhaps next year.
Okay. So that sort of sounded like a motion council in the making there, councillor Melanie Sampson.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be formal as, as Don has mentioned until the end of the month, but, you know, I, I'm just, those are my thoughts.
I could suggest perhaps maybe consensus on maybe the warden on behalf of council making a statement that we could post on our website. If that's something that would, that could happen quicker than, you know, ordering and trying to get a flag in in time to fly it.
Yeah, it does only take a couple of days to get a flag in, but I'm happy to do a statement as well.
So maybe would it be a fair assumption to say that, yeah, we do up the, do up the statement, put it on our Facebook page and, or put it on our, our site, and at the same time maybe order flag? And if it does get in, can, can, can you fly the flag, Don, with consensus, with consensus tonight?
Well, I, I think we can do that. We lowered them as such, so.
Yeah. We could do it, which, yeah.
I don't want to bring you on the spot, I just.
Well, we, yeah, it's not a problem. I mean, we could, we could, we'd have, we'd have to remove one, so my, my likely guess would be to remove the county flag. That time being and then replace it when the month is up.
I've seen some flags where you, they do the two one one pole. Is that a special kind of, I know nothing about flag poles, so I have to ask, is that a special kind of?
Yeah. I'm not sure if our flag poles can accommodate that, but I can check that as well.
Okay, all right.
So again, that's where I.
Yeah, so go ahead and create some consensus and we can.
Okay, so.
Again, that's where, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna mention, I'm looking for consensus, I guess, that I would write a, a statement that we could publish on the website as well as our social media and to have staff look into obtaining a flag that we can raise this month. Councillor Sean Sampson, would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay, Deputy Warden?
So, excuse me, you have, you definitely have my consensus by writing, writing the statement. I, I don't, I don't believe that we want to, I don't know how to say this. I think we're about inclusion and not separation, so. So we almost got to include everybody. So taking down our Richmond County flag to me isn't, it to me isn't a great option, I guess. I would prefer to see the extra pole set up, so if that means next year we have to wait to have the extra pole. And I just, I feel that maybe by taking down the Richmond County flag, we're, we're singling out the whole purpose of the pride flag as opposed to the inclusion part. So I don't know if I'm making sense the way I'm trying to explain it, but.
So, so I think the, the, the suggestion was to have staff look into raising a flag to see if it was possible. And it may be possible to have two on one pole, right?
Right, so if that, if that's, if that's an option available, then I definitely, I have no issue with that. I just, I don't believe that we should lower one of our flags, especially our Richmond County flag, which represents all of the county, to fly a different flag would be my take, I guess.
Okay.
But I, I would say maybe we just check into what, you know, other municipalities do in the sense of what the protocol normally is, maybe as to which flag is generally placed. Now, I know not, you know, every municipality has different sets of flags, but I, I would assume what Dawn was saying, that the municipality one would be the one to be replaced for the month. I, I don't see any problem with that, but.
Yeah. Okay, councillor Melanie Sampson, I think. I'm just looking for it to build that consensus.
She was freezing, I think.
Yeah, I think her computer might be freezing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll proceed at least with, I guess, writing a statement at this point. I'm not sure, in the meantime, Yvonne, if, if you could check in with councillor Melanie to see if she's, oh, there, she's back. We lost you for a minute there.
I'm having crazy internet. I've been kicked off twice, apologies.
That's all good. I was just looking for your consensus on having me write a statement that we would publish on web and social media and to look into potentially raising a flag.
Yes, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and we do have, I guess, consensus like from deputy warden, as long as we don't have to take down the Richmond County flag, is the point that he was making. So, so I think we can proceed on that. Is that enough clarity for staff, Dawn?
Yeah, I think we'll be all right with that.
If we didn't, if we didn't want, if we didn't want to go down that road, CEO, and we didn't want to take down any of the flags, what would be the possibility of putting the pride flag on one of our sidewalk streetlight poles? Is that a possibility?
I, I never thought about, I never thought about that, that side of it. If, I mean, that's, those are the sidewalks, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, it's simply an option to kind to, you know, to kind to, 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 to look, look at deputy warden's issue, right? I mean, you know, just the more options we have, I guess, to make sure that we, we get this done, you know. So I don't know, you can check with staff, CEO, to see if that is an option and if it's not, that's okay to just.
Yeah, I, I can check that out. But, but my understanding with this is that if we can't put two flags on one pole, then we, we don't go ahead and do it?
I, I don't believe we have consensus otherwise, so.
Well, we have one person saying no. Did we have others saying no? But I personally have no problem taking down the county flag for pride month.
Yeah.
Because I think it shows inclusiveness, not divisiveness, so.
Yeah, so councillor Melanie Sampson, the reason we were talking about consensus is because we don't have, we won't be able to actually vote on this until the 24th of June and it's very late in the month. Do you know what I mean? We can take a vote now and we, we can still do that. I'm, I'm happy to do that. I would just need someone to make the motion. But then just recognizing there would be delay.
So I wouldn't, so I guess, allow me to speak out of term, so I, I definitely wouldn't want to make anybody feel excluded. So why, if, if it's not a, I guess if it's not a sore spot to anybody by taking down the county flag, then I'm okay with putting up the pride flag. My only worry is that we get feedback or punched back by taking down our county flag. So I, I don't mean, and I know it's a double, it's a double negative, it's just, it's unfortunately that we don't have the extra pole. So I'm okay with raising the pride flag. I just, I, I like to raise it with caution, I guess is the best way to.
Okay. All right, so I'm just gonna ask one more time, like, we, we don't really have consensus across the board on the flag, but, but I, I think we certainly do on the statement with the social media and the, and the website. And, and then just the conditional sort of consensus regarding the flag. If councillors would rather put this to a vote and, and, you know, just recognizing there'd be a delay, then that's okay too. I just want to provide those as options, so. Any further comment? Okay. All righty. So thanks, everyone. And I, I have to say, I think that steps in the right direction. I don't think that the county has, has recognized pride month in the past. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm really happy that we're, we're taking that step at a council level. I'm sure staff have done things, but but I'm happy we're taking those steps. And so the next item on the agenda is Indigenous History Month. This is, this is again, a recognition. In June, we commemorate National Indigenous History Month to recognize the history, heritage and diversity of First Nations, Inuit and Native peoples in Canada. This year, National Indigenous History Month is dedicated to the missing children, the families left behind and the survivors of residential schools. And I don't think there has ever been a better or more important time to deliver on the Truth and Reconciliation Commission calls to action. And you can see those on the Crown Indigenous Relations and Northern Affairs Canada website. We do have an agenda item that I know will lead to further discussion and so maybe some potential action on this, but I did want to offer this for discussion by council as a recognition of Indigenous History Month. Is there any other comments that council would like to make on this matter? Okay, so hearing none, I'm gonna move us on. And I, I want to make sure I'm not going too fast. I guess I should be recognizing we've had some audio issues, but just feel free to interrupt me if I'm moving along too quickly.
Sorry, I, I think that I, I may, I, I just catching the end part there, sorry, if I can, just, I'd just like to speak just for a quick minute on that. So, so not that I necessarily want to add anything particular to Indigenous History Month recognition, because, you know, I thank you for doing that. But I, I do think, you know, you did mention the Truth and Reconciliation Report, and, and I guess I would be remiss to say that I, I would like council to consider the, you know, to, for us to add the land recognition to our agendas on a regular basis for our meetings. I think, you know, it is certainly something that was covered in the Truth and Reconciliation Report. It was one of the suggestions that were made. And as quite frankly, as a county, as a county, we've not been doing that in our council meetings. So I'd like to maybe open the discussion for that.
Okay, nice. And yeah, and we, we can certainly have that discussion now. I, I would offer another option would be to have, you know, a qualified in, in person from our, maybe our local community or from the indigenous community come in and talk to us about how we could best do that. Or what the meaning would be, or what, you know, what would be most appropriate. That's also an option.
Sure, I'd be fine with that as well. That's the wish of council.
Any other thoughts from councillors on that?
Yeah, I would, I agree. I believe if we're going to make that step, then the first thing we have to do is reach out to the community of the indigenous people. Honestly, we've been in, we've been in chambers for what, five to six months now? And I'd be hard pressed to say, other than the opening of the, the food bank, nobody's reached out, nobody's made contact and nobody's, you know, asked or seen if, if they had any needs or concerns that they could ring to the table to the county of Richmond, which is very unfortunate. Again, I think before we sit and, you know, recognize the land, which we all know is unceded territory, but again, how about we have some inclusion and bring them into the discussion as opposed to just recognizing land that everybody knows was theirs to begin with? So again, I don't have really a problem of recognition of the land unless it's just, we're only doing it for the fact of, of saying the words as opposed to including them in what we actually want to grow as a Richmond County.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further comments from councillors on that? I think we'd probably be looking for a motion to invite a qualified indigenous person to come in and speak with council about, about that. But councillor Sean or Brent Sampson, would you like to comment?
No, I'm good with that. I actually spoke to Chief Over Marshall today, earlier this morning. I was talking to him on a few other things and they do have some upcoming projects that are looking at that they want to kind of bring to our attention probably in the coming months. So I think we will be hearing from them, yeah.
That's great.
Make that motion that we invite them.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
And I'll second your motion, yeah.
Okay, all right. So the motion is to invite a qualified person from an indigenous community to come and speak with council about the land recognition statement. Is there any further discussion on that? Or councillor Melanie Sampson, did I phrase that correctly?
I'm just wondering maybe if, if we could just invite them to just speak about the Truth and Reconciliation Report and how they feel as a county, we can support that nationwide, you know, research and report that's been created and, and how, you know, their feelings about it and, and how they feel we can support that here in Richmond County.
Okay. So that's your motion. Councillor Sean Sampson, you had seconded that. So we're still good there. Okay, so any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the call for a national day of mourning for the lost children of residential school. And, you know, it's been a very difficult month in, in Canada. I would suggest even further at the end of May, it was confirmed that the remains of 215 lost loved ones, children, were found on the site of a former Kamloops Indian Residential School. The survivors of residential schools and the families carry the burden of this tragedy. And a petition on change.org is recommending that it is due time that Canada as a whole also share this burden. The deaths impact everyone in the land and so it's important we all come together to mourn is, is what the petition suggests. It calls for Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, Minister Mark Miller and Minister Carolyn Bennett to call for this National Day of Mourning. I did want to mention the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action include a similar statement, a little differently worded. It's action number 80, which calls upon the federal government to establish a new statutory holiday, a national day for truth and reconciliation, to honor survivors, their families and communities, and to ensure that public commemoration of the history and legacy of residential schools remains a vital component of the reconciliation process. So I guess at this point, I just wanted to check in with councillors. I mean, maybe we've covered this under the previous motion because it was such a, you know, it's a more comprehensive discussion. You know, consultation with local community is their desire by council to take some action or to have that conversation first. So I just look for your opinions on that.
My feeling that is that again, if, if, you know, if it's, if it's council's desire to reach out to the indigenous community in Richmond County to ask their, you know, their views on the suggestions and, you know, on the call, that call to action in the Truth and Reconciliation Report, then we should, you know, and I think we could certainly highlight, you know, both of these calls to action and sort of, you know, that specifically as a council, we've been thinking about both of them and are really interested to hear their opinions on them.
Okay.
I just, I feel, again, like my personal view, of course, like, you know, I've already signed the petition, you know, but, but but as a council, if we're, if we're really to do our due diligence here in the same way that with the land recognition, I'd like to see us reach out and, and truly understand.
Yeah, and I think your previous motion regarding, you know, covering the Truth and Reconciliation Report probably covers this item. And, you know, if we're, if we're doing that outreach, but any other comments?
Yeah, you're correct, Warden, we're getting, and then councillor Melanie, I think that that conversation is, is gonna be, you know, those, those two topics are gonna be discussed, you know, so that, that's gonna be part of the same conversation for sure, well into the future.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Any other final comments on that? Okay. So thanks, everyone. I'll move us on now to the next item on the agenda. And this is an update on the Affordable Housing Commission Report. There were 17 recommendations published on May 31st to deal with the housing crisis in Nova Scotia as a result of the work of the Housing Commission over the last number of months, and the report is available online. I wanted to just let council and the public know though, that the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition met on June 9th. And one of the agenda items was to discuss the report and to issue a response. And I think there was general support for the principles of the report and recommendations, but also some concerns expressed by the coalition. Those included that the commission must focus on timely action. You know, it was noted that only three of the 17 recommendations were identified as short-term actions. That the commission recognized the importance of nonprofits in addressing the housing crisis. And, you know, I think during that discussion, Santa Fe's Extension Department has been conducting research related to housing. There are currently 196, at least 196 housing-related groups working in Nova Scotia. And so the landscape of, you know, is disorganized at best. And, you know, there was discussion that nonprofits need to be working towards a provincial strategy at a local level and they need to be appropriately resourced. An additional concern was expressed that the commission recommendations may amount to a downloading of responsibility to municipalities. And I think we need to be diligent and, and look closely at that as a municipal council. Overall, the focus needs to be on a provincial strategy that allows municipalities to take leadership on a number of fronts, but not to necessarily download that overall responsibility and the associated costs that could potentially come with them. And there was also concern expressed that the commission considered the concept of age-friendly communities when defining affordable housing and the spectrum of options that were presented. So one of the actions that came from that discussion of the coalition is that, you know, as a co-chair, I'll be drafting a letter based on the discussion at that meeting on behalf of the coalition. And it was really great timing because later in the evening, NSFM posted a conversation for wardens and mayors to discuss the report. They were seeking remarks and reactions so that they could formulate a response. They found that eight of the 17 recommendations could have an impact on municipalities. I won't list them all, but I mean, there were recommendations such as, you know, empower municipalities to become key partners in affordable housing and prevent the loss of affordable homes, including working with municipalities to create incentives. So again, concerns raised about that downloading and what that potential cost could look like. You know, we also had some concerns that, you know, NSFM should have an immediate seat at the table going forward because, you know, the majority of, or, or almost half of those recommendations have some municipal impact. And, you know, two, two concerns that were noted by that discussion was that the report doesn't give us a full appreciation of the need and the work that needs to be done at a provincial level to ensure we have consistent data and consistent approach for Nova Scotians. And the second concern was that the report contains no clear indications of cost implications to enacting those recommendations, or even really any discussion on how they should be financed. So, you know, property tax versus income tax, that kind of thing. So I wanted to open it for discussion by council if there's any, you know, any further, you know, and I sent an update, I guess via email some time ago, but I wanted to know if there was any further concerns aside from what's already been expressed by council. I'm happy to provide that back to NSFM on our behalf. I just wondered, you know, they've provided us with a window of opportunity so we can send in the next couple of days, our reaction if there's additional concerns that you might have. You just need to let me know. So any, any other concerns or discussion on that from council? Okay, all right. Well, I'm not hearing any and I, I will say, like, I, it was. And I will say, like, it was interesting to hear that, you know, so many rural municipalities with very similar sort of feedback, you know, that concern around downloading. I think all municipalities are concerned about that, particularly in rural regions, so. Okay, so I guess if there's no further discussion, I'll I'll just let NSFM know that that what we discussed sort of aligns with, you know, with the thinking of, I guess, municipalities across the province. We don't have anything to add. But certainly if anything comes up in the next number of days, council, I would really encourage you to just shoot me an email and I can definitely send that her way. Okay. All right. So the next item on our agenda is the Affordable Housing, oh, sorry, we just did that one, is the rapid testing for employers. So the rapid testing opportunity for employers is COVID-related, obviously, but it's, the Cape Breton Partnership has essentially partnered with the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce and the Sydney Area Chamber of Commerce to roll out a rapid testing consortium in Cape Breton. The program's being administered across the country by a group called Creative Destruction Labs and by both the provincial and federal governments. The initiative is aimed at providing workplaces with self-administered testing kits for their employees in an effort to help identify and stop the spread of COVID while keeping the workforce safe. If you're a municipality or First Nation community organization or a Cape Breton Inumogi business who is interested in participating in the initiative, there are, there's some steps you need to follow. You need to register and then you can become part of that program. And I just wanted to mention, you know, from several meetings back, you know, this council had discussed the need for more testing in Richmond County. So I really see this as welcome news and would encourage businesses and employers to really get on board with this if possible. And I wondered, just thoughts from council about any ways that we might be able to contribute or what your thoughts are in general on this type of rapid testing opportunity? Would you like to chime in?
You know, Madam Warden, you know if anybody has applied in our area for the setup of rapid testing? I know Clearwater has their own system set up for their employees because they have so many, but is there anybody else that reached out to set up either Erie Shad, St. Peters, somewhere where?
Yeah, so we would have to check with the coordinators of the program. I think the Cape Breton Partnership or the Chamber of Commerce would probably have that information. Because it's not like, so what it is, is it's a rapid testing opportunity. It's not a requirement. So if a place of employment like the municipality or a business or wherever were to register for this, it would mean their employees have the opportunity to get tested. And that information in terms of who gets the rapid testing kits, that's all being kind of administered through the Cape Breton Partnership and the chambers. We have to check with them.
So I guess on that note, I would just encourage, you know, the folks from the public who are here with us this evening, you know, who probably interact with different organizations on a regular basis or, you know, are working for organizations in Richmond County, to just encourage their employers to reach out to the partnership to do this because certainly the more testing we do, the more confidence our government has that we have the virus, you know, the numbers are looking good. But they have said repeatedly that not just the numbers of infections are going to be part of their decision-making, but also they're going to be basing it on the percentage of testing that's done. And so the more testing we do, the better off we are. So I can say I'm on the board of CNN Centre and I know that they will be doing rapid testing at their location. So I'm not sure if they're doing it in collaboration with the partnership or whether or not it's an initiative of, you know, they're not actually with NSHA, but if, whether it's a, you know, healthcare initiative, but they are doing it at their site. And so again, just, I think to encourage others to do that, you know, and there was a press release on it, but certainly if people need to get connected with the partnership, you know, reach out to your councillor and we can we can direct you to the proper people.
Yeah, and I'm just getting a message now from, through Yvonne from the partnership that no one in the county has applied yet for the rapid testing. So, you know, I guess I would wonder if what we as a municipality could be doing to take some leadership on this? And to help to spread the message, so.
Have we shared it on our Facebook? I don't recall seeing it there, but that doesn't mean it wasn't there.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So perhaps we could, you know, just maybe mention it to the director to see if it's something that could be done. Again, we do reach a lot of people through our social media and our website. I think that could encourage people to, organizations to do it.
So, I don't know, Don, would you know if it's been shared on our Facebook page? I honestly didn't notice either.
I don't think it is, but we certainly can put it in there and include it for sure.
So I'm just looking at the press release as we're talking about it that came from partnership earlier this month. And it actually said that their registration for the first cohort was until Thursday, June 10th, so that was last Thursday. So perhaps we should just ensure that they're doing a second cohort before we advertise it. So perhaps we could just encourage folks, like encourage Lorie to connect with Carla or with Misty or somebody either from the chamber or from the partnership to ensure that they're taking a second cohort.
I'm getting another message from Yvonne, and another will be launching on June 22nd, so.
There you go. I love it. You're on it. Great, yeah. Yeah, so, but I do think we should encourage folks to do it. It's very important, of course, yeah.
Okay, great. All right. So the next, oh, sorry, I just, I'll offer for further discussion. Any other comments from council on this? And, so Megan Watt is the point of contact for that program. She works with the Cape Breton Partnership. So if we do any social media posts on it, we can mention her and that will connect people to her. So that's, thank you Megan and Cape Breton Partnership and the Chambers of Commerce for supporting this rapid testing opportunity in our communities. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is regarding municipal affairs training regarding in camera. So this was a follow-up to the meeting that we had with Municipal Affairs on June 1st. During that meeting, we had a discussion about future training and improvements and communications and all kinds of different things. One particular suggestion though was to have a follow-up training session on in-camera content, what does and does not constitute a meeting of council, et cetera. And the suggestion from Municipal Affairs was to invite our solicitor to that session so that we would all be on the same page as a group going forward regarding in camera and what is and is not a meeting. So I guess I just opened this for discussion, council. If you're interested in having that in-camera training session and discussion with the solicitor together. Any comments or thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would just say that I believe we definitely we definitely need to reach out and make sure that we're not crossing any boundaries, I guess, that we're unaware of. To my knowledge though, last time we met with our solicitor, I believe we covered part of that and he wasn't sure and he got some clarification, but I think we're back at the same kind of drawing board because the clarification he got is actually a little different than the clarification we got talking to Municipal Affairs. So we may want to have him reach out again. And, yeah, see if we can kind of put that issue to rest and know where we stand every time we meet.
Yeah, I think that was part of the reason why we thought to invite him to the kind of training session so we're all able to discuss it together and then come to that agreement. So, I don't know, maybe I'll just, I guess, I guess at this point, I'd be looking for consensus of council to see if, you know, you would be interested in having that training session with the solicitor present at Municipal Affairs, of course, conducting the training. Recognizing that the summer's coming upon us and, you know, we may not want to wait until the end of June before we start scheduling something, so. So councillor Melanie Sampson, can I maybe get your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would definitely support that. And I guess I would say, I think the part of the focus that we probably need in clarification is more about what constitutes a meeting of council. So I think we're fairly clear that when there's a meeting, what are the parameters around that? I think that where we're not clear across the board is what constitutes a meeting versus an information session or a training session or whatever. So I think that would be the area I would like to see as a focus, but certainly conversations about both would be great.
All right, councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, for sure. I would reiterate councillor Melanie Sampson's comments. Yeah, the more training, the better. We're all, we've only been six or seven months in here, so we're still all fairly new. So the more training, the more knowledge, the better. So I would welcome this meeting for sure.
Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, no, I think it would be a good idea, I guess, if everybody could be present, Solicitor at Municipal Affairs, because it's pretty obvious. You don't get much of a straight answer for Municipal Affairs, I guess, but the more we can learn, the better.
Okay. Deputy Warden, is that? I just wanted to regroup with you on that, yeah?
Yeah, no, 100%.
Okay. Okay, so we have some consensus on that then, Don, to reach out to Ross to schedule that training to include our solicitor in that invitation. Would you need any more clarity to be able to proceed on that one?
No, we could just try to coordinate it with our solicitor and with them to see. And I know in speaking with Ross and the folks at MA, they would really like to come and visit in person. I don't know if that's going to happen between now and the end of June, but if at all possible, we could do it that way. Obviously, you know, I don't think it will be that, so we'll probably have to do it virtually. And see what times that they're available and match them off with our lawyer and get together, I guess.
That would be great. So we'll leave that with staff to coordinate then. Don, thank you so much. And hopefully we will be able to do something in person with them in the near future. That would be really great, so. Okay, so that is the end of my long list unless there's any further comments on that Municipal Affairs training from council. And so thanks for bearing with me through all of that. Regarding, next item on our agenda is correspondence from the Minister of Environment and Climate Change. And I am seeing now my screen has gone too, so it's just technical difficulties today. So Don, would you mind doing a brief overview of the correspondence while I bring my screen back up here?
Yeah, so essentially it was a letter sent by the Minister of Environment and Climate Change making aware of a climate change, sorry, a launch, a 60-day public engagement on creating goals under Sustainable Development Goals Act. And the purpose of it is, I guess, is to make people aware that this is going on, people in your writings and your constituents, and giving them possible links to CleanFuture.ca and to an actual individual that works in the department in, I guess, climate change Nova Scotia. Not sure what it is actually, it's.
Environment and climate change.
Yeah, he's in that department. His name is Jason Pollitt. And his contact information is on that correspondence as well. And they're looking for as much feedback as possible during that 60-day public engagement.
Okay, and I wonder, is this, this is probably, I think they're asking us to share with residents, so again, could, you know, we could release this on our social media. It wouldn't be in time for our next edition of Richmond Reflections, but perhaps we could ask staff to share that publicly?
Yeah, the dates are May 27th to July 26th.
Right. Okay. So would councillors be okay with us sharing that information publicly on our website and social media as well? Seeing some nodding heads.
I would say it's pretty timely that this, of course, as I was going through the meeting information and I saw Adam's presentation and then I saw this, I thought, wow, it's like they belong together. I mean, I suspect he is aware of this, but perhaps we could just forward that off to him.
Yeah.
I think I have his email address, so he's in my district, so I'd all offer to send that to him just to ensure he's aware of it and he can spread it through his circle.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson, that would be great.
We will post it as well, the letter itself on our website.
Okay.
Facebook page.
Okay, thank you, Don. Okay, so is there any further discussion on that item, correspondence? Okay, so I'll go next to the deputy warden. Deputy Warden Diggan, you wanted to bring up tax role maintenance planning and PVSC.
It's all, I guess, the first thing I must say is that I know the last couple of months, you know, has been very busy with the budget and getting ready for the audit. You know, acknowledge the hard work and time that the staff has put into completing the budget and getting to where it's at. But I think now, I think now one of our main objectives that we have to look at is directing staff to work diligently with PVSC to address the major problem that we have with the land tax. So so I know we had made a motion, I believe, in the past to have staff reach out to PVSC. And like I say, I know that it kind of fell by the wayside. Sorry, I shouldn't have fell by the wayside. Probably just got pushed a little bit to the side because of the ongoing stuff that we had. But I really feel that, you know, the problem that we are facing in Richmond County is severe, not only just for the tax assessment, but actually for the assessment of the properties. And I think that's something that PVSC is going to have to look diligently into, property for property or however they're going to do it. And, you know, whether it be, you know, staff and council and PVSC get together or if it's something that staff wants to reach out on their own or, you know, whatever I think is best, but I really feel that that's something that we really have to push forward and, you know, do so quickly.
Okay, I mean, okay, so we already have a motion, I guess, on the books for this. I guess at this point, you're looking for a little bit more of a timeline on, and I do recognize we were obviously very concerned with budget and we have currently an auditing going on right now. So these are, those are the highest priorities, priority things we need to be getting done, for sure, so.
In the air. So I guess we have to remember that PVSC works for us. We do pay PVSC to do what they do. So at the end of the day, I believe it's something that, you know, that we really have to step up and have them step up to the plate and start looking at the missing pieces to the puzzle and the missing land taxes that aren't being paid for. And, yeah, could just put everything, everything in fairness, I guess, is what we need to do across the Richmond County. So I guess I'd ask the CAO maybe to, I don't know, reach out or his thoughts on this or?
So just for a little bit of clarity, obviously this type of undertaking is massive. And if it's going to be, if it's going to be, you know, conducted by anybody, it's going to be PVSC. And with the help, of course, of municipal staff, they will, they will basically start the process and feel, they'll deal with it the way they feel that they need to deal with it in order to rectify the problem. Nobody knows really to what extent this is a severe or it's not a severe or to what level it's an issue. So until they determine that there's a huge issue or it's not so huge, then I think that they'll expend resources to deal with it. Obviously, you're right, they do work for us and they do want to try and secure the role. However, matching account numbers to PID numbers is somewhat of a role of PVSC. They do valuation. However, land information people are the ones that are responsible for matching an account to a PID number. And I know I did, I did watch Lloyd Ploud's interview on TALIL that indicated that, you know, it is their problem. It is something that they're going to be looking into with land information. And we would certainly, we will certainly accommodate them in any way that we can. And we would certainly accommodate them in any way that we can to fix the problem. Depending on how large and huge the problem is, and which we really don't know how big it is, the scope of it would be determined by them and pretty much not by us. So in the coming months, I'm sure they're going to have some more we're going to have something to provide us with, some direction. And once we find that out, then we'll inform council on their plan to move forward to rectify the situation.
Yeah, so I guess, and that's exactly what we're looking for. I guess the only problem, and it's not a problem. I think the only thing I think we need to guide PVSC for is the land tax isn't the only issue we have. And I know their main job is assessment, and I believe that's probably one of the issues that I have as well is that when you look at the property assessment, and I can speak for myself because I bought a piece of property at $40,000 and it's assessed at five. So again, I'm not throwing myself out there to pay more tax, but at the end of the day, we also have to be fair rate across the board. So if you're building a I know a place where there's a piece of property that was assessed for $15,000 of woodland. There's now a home on that property and you're still paying woodland taxes. So again, that goes back to PVSC and having to do the due diligence of double checking the properties that may have changed in the last five or 10 years. And again, I think it's just something we all have to work together to rectify and just for fairness right across the board. So whether it's two pieces of property not paying tax or two pieces unassessed, then our tax
Deputy Warden, I guess one thing I'm wondering, you know, just as I'm listening to you talk about this, and I know we do already have a motion on the books for staff to look into this, and I know that they will. But I'm wondering if we should be asking PVSC to come and meet with us to discuss this, you know, just so that as council, we can understand kind of firsthand, you know, what's happening in their world that may be contributing to this this issue and to maybe, you know, so that we are all together and we can work out a plan. Because, you know, to the CAO's point, a lot of this responsibility does fall with them. I don't know, would there be interest in having such a meeting?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Is that something that would commonly happen? I mean, the principle around it sounds fine to me. I just don't like.
I can't really answer that.
I think for us to get the general, I guess, the general idea of exactly what they do or their scope of their scope of what they cover and how they assess the properties, maybe, you know, if nothing else, it'll be educational to, you know, why is the cap the cap more or less? And at what percentage and why do they pick the percentage where they that they choose to increase the property? And, you know, why is the assessment higher than the cap kind of thing? So it's just, it's all questions that I think, you know, we kind of need the answers to in order for for everybody to be, you know, taxed fairly. So just because the assessment, just because, I guess the best way to put it is just because your assessment value increases doesn't mean that your taxes are going to actually increase. Because the guy next to you, your assessment value may increase, but the guy next to you, his may double. So because he's been paying, you know, not the fair market value, the fair value for the last 10 years. So therefore, while his doubling, you know, our revenue increases, doesn't mean that the taxation increases.
Okay, so we've got, I think we've kind of split this off into two separate things because we originally were talking about properties missing from the tax role, which honestly, I feel like that probably needs to be the priority. There's this other discussion around assessment, but
100%.
Maybe we do need to have PVSC come in and just chat with us about this. So to Council Melanie's point, I'm not really sure if that's the norm. I mean, we invited the housing authority. I don't see why we couldn't invite PVSC. But, you know, we can ask the CAO to check on that. Would councillors be okay with requesting that type of a meeting with PVSC? Council Sean Sampson, I'm seeing you nod.
Yeah, I'm okay with that for sure.
Okay.
I would say that they would be happy to come and present. And I mean, it wouldn't be, it would be just related to the issue about tax role and proper assessment and PID matching. They could touch on a number of topics and provide some clarity with respect to cap assessment as well as how they determine the role.
Yeah, so I think we have consensus then from council to invite them to meet Don. So you should leave that in your hands to set that up for us?
Sure, yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. All right, so I'll move us on. Unless there's any further discussion, Deputy Warden, this was your matter. So did you have any final comments?
No, no, that's great. That's a, you know, a good step ahead and and go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't want to add to this, but, I mean, the PVSC works off building permits, correct? Like Deputy Warden, so to go back to your point of woodland, of woodland being
No, sorry, go ahead. I was confused from that.
Yeah, so I mean, for woodland, you know, being taxed at $5,000 and now there's a home on it and there's a two-door garage on it and they're still being taxed at the same. You would think that you would have had to have building permits for that house and building permits for those garages and whatever's on that property today. So the PVSC would, you know, reach out and get building permits from the Eastern District Planar Commission and our building inspectors have to go there. You'd have to wonder, you know, what steps are to make sure that this doesn't get minced, right?
Well, yeah, and exactly to your comment, Sean. And honestly, just to put a little bit of light on the situation for everybody, why bring this? It's not only the building, but also there's a piece of, so there's a property with an assessment value that no longer has a dwelling, yet the property is assessed still at the land and dwelling cost. So it's a vacant piece of land, less than an acre, assessed at almost $80,000.
Okay, so I think, I mean, you know, I can appreciate the examples. Our desire here, I think, is to reach out to PVSC, right? So
I think so, yeah. I think we're good there. Okay, so I'm going to move us on then. Next item on the agenda is for Council Melanie Sampson regarding Richmond County Literacy Network follow-up.
Awesome, thank you. So at our last regular council meeting, we did have a correspondence from Millie Hat. And Millie is the network coordinator for the Richmond County Literacy Network. And in her correspondence, she just reached out asking the municipality to consider forming a coalition of stakeholders to work collaboratively to meet the needs of the people of Richmond County. And in the correspondence, she also discussed how such a coalition had been in existence in the past and that it had been very valuable. And so at that time, we had just asked the CAO if staff would have time to do that. And he didn't feel that they would have time. And my concern was that perhaps we were, you know, that the CAO was thinking that this was a huge and I didn't know at the time myself whether or not this was a huge time commitment or not or where that could perhaps fit into the framework of our staffing. So I had offered to reach out to Millie and just chat with her a little bit about, you know, specifically what did she have in mind, like when she wrote the letter, what was her vision for what our role would be? And so in chatting with her, basically, she is really looking for very little from us, to be very honest. Her thought was that, so again, to just give a bit of a history in the way it was relayed to me was that it just gathered together about 20 or 30 stakeholders and just invited them to kind of, I call it a coffee chat. So at the time it originally was in place, of course, we didn't do things electronically and everybody was trying to meet in person. And so in the beginning, there was lots of interest and basically all of the different groups would come together. And when they would come together, they would just sort of do a bit of a round table and talk about what they had on their agendas at those times and then talk about how they could support each other to support the people of the county, right? So it sounded like a really great opportunity for, you know, the synergies of the group. And so she just felt like at this time where we've become so accustomed to doing meetings electronically that it may be a great time to sort of, you know, renew this group and make it that it would be an electronic coffee shop, if you will, every two, you know, two or three times a year. So in that vein, basically what she was saying is really all that would need to happen would be she's got a list of 20 or 30 different organizations that she feels would like to be participatory. For most of them, she said she has contact people, including email addresses. So she said she, you know, she may need a little bit of help, you know, and she thought under 10 hours from somebody on staff who maybe could help her just get the contact people. So basically to build the distribution list to just, you know, to just send out an email to that list and say, hey, we'd like to sort of renew this coalition. And then to just book two to three meetings on Zoom a year, just, you know, to use our Zoom account for lack of a better term, but just book that meeting. And then if someone from someone from our Recreation, Leisure and Community Relations Department perhaps could attend and not necessarily always the same person, but somebody from that department and leave it open so that if councillors wanted to join, they could join. So there would be no requirement for a councillor to be assigned to that coalition. But I guess similar to the way like the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health Committee is, is they invite all of us. You know, it's not a meeting per se, it's like a think tank. And we're more there to listen, support and get, you know, get information that we can relay back. And she felt that our role in this coalition as councillors would be the same. Likewise, the role of the person from the county would be similar as well. Just more about just being a member of the table, right? So as they do, and she just envisioned, you know, maybe an hour-long meeting two or three times a year, depending on the number of people who'd be there, and just a bit of a round table. This is what we're doing, you know, oh, that's great, that would help this person that I have in my group and then a way to work together. So I guess I just wanted to offer that information that I got from Millie and just share it with the group and of course, share it with Don and maybe ask that he could, you know, chat with Lorie and see if perhaps he feels his department could do some of that. You know, it seems like, again, fairly limited work, you know, maybe a 10-hour commitment to just get it up and going and then, you know, maybe two hours or three times a year or something to just attend a meeting.
Any thoughts from councillors on asking staff to look into that? Is there an affirmative or?
I don't think that's much of a request from Millie and from our group for all the work they do in our county, right? So let's hope we can work together with them and then try to make this work. Again, like Council Melanie said, when it comes to these information sessions, we get invited all the time. And for me, I try to get on some sometimes and don't make it all the time. But when it comes to these information sessions, the more information, you know, information becomes knowledge, right? So the more knowledge of these groups that we're able to obtain, the better off for all of us, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think maybe we can double check with our CAO. At the time, I think that we asked them, we were flat out swamped into budget deliberations again. So, you know, the focus was on getting that done. And again, now that you provided a little more feedback in what is required and what is covered, you know, I noticed tonight, you know, there's people kind of listening in on the budget, there was people, you know, listening in on the budget meeting. So maybe there are some staff members that the CAO can recommend or that can, you know, that can kind of switch in and out to attend the meetings that might be able to provide some feedback and some extra support. So I think we have to send that back to the CAO and see what Don can help us with or provide us with.
Okay, Council Brent Sampson, did you want to make a comment on that? Okay. All right. So Don, did you want to bring that information back to Lorie and check with him regarding the matter?
Yeah, what I suggest we do is perhaps council can recommend that or make a motion to get staff to provide a staff report on on the Richmond County Literacy Network follow-up and the discussion that we had. And we can put something together for council for the council meeting on the 28th.
Council Melanie Sampson, did you want to follow up, comment on it? Or make a motion?
Yeah, that's fine. So Don, basically what you're suggesting is that is that somebody from staff would connect with Millie to just chat about it and then consider what they may or may not be able to provide as support. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, not necessarily. I'm looking at reviewing it with staff to see what their ability is to do those extra duties and to provide that presence on that coalition.
Okay.
And provide that information back to
Yeah.
back to council.
Perfect. I appreciate that. That was basically what I was hoping would come out of it. Like certainly, you know, I didn't expect a commitment from you today, just a recognition that you'd have a look at it. And again, I guess I would say in speaking with Millie Hat, she certainly said as well if anybody wanted to reach out to her to just get extra clarification in terms of sort of what that time commitment could look like or what it looks like, that she is always happy to chat with whoever wants to chat.
So I think we'll just need a motion to that effect, Council Melanie Sampson, if you wanted to.
Okay, so the motion, I guess, would be to
Have staff
Have staff prepare, yeah, to investigate the potential of supporting the correspondence, the request as per the correspondence in our regular council meeting.
All right. Thank you. Could I have a second around that motion? Council Sean Sampson, I see your hand up there. Okay, any further discussion on that item?
Questions?
Okay, so all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Council Melanie Sampson. Back to you for straight area transit.
Hmm, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on the straight area transit because, of course, they've been in the news a bit lately. There was a bit of an announcement in terms of funding for them. So as one of the two, so Warden Mumberkett and I both sit on the straight area transit board and I'm actually the chair of that board. I guess I just wanted to, again, highlight the importance of straight area transit to the Inverness, Richmond, or Hoxbury areas. And we're just finalizing, waiting for the final numbers from Inverness County in terms of support there. But, you know, it's over 100,000 from what we understand, but we're not quite sure exactly the number. And of course, Richmond County provides $100,000 of funding support to the transit. And in the news, they did talk about some CTAP and PTAP funding, which comes from the from the provincial government to continue to support the transit. So I guess I wanted to say a couple of things. One, although that funding announcement did not really announce new funding, it was announcing continued funding that the transit is very appreciative of that support. And I guess I also wanted to comment that we want to encourage residents, of course, of Richmond County to use this vital service. I guess I would say as well, you know, we had a presentation and a letter relating to economic pardon me, to sustainability. And so we want to remember that public transit is one way for sure that we can help our environment. And so I also want to remind folks that the straight area transit is still providing a subsidized service to transport folks to vaccine appointments. So if you have a vaccine appointment and you need to travel perhaps to Hoxbury for that vaccine appointment, you can call the straight area transit and arrange for that to happen for you. They provide a doorside service and the flat fee is $5 and the rest is subsidized by the government as a support for that service. So definitely want to encourage folks to do that if they are so inclined. And there's no end date for that special funding for those vaccine appointments. But I thought that folks may not be aware that those fees existed for them.
That's really great information, Council Melanie Sampson. Thank you so much for sharing. Does councillors have any comments or questions for on that matter? Okay, all right. Thanks again, Council Melanie, for sharing that info. Next item on our agenda is Council Sean Sampson regarding congratulations to the grads of 2021. Next item on our agenda is Counselor Sean Sampson regarding congratulations to the grads of 2021. So over to you, Sean.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Warden. So, so for me, on behalf of our entire council team, I just want to congratulate all the graduating students here in Richmond County. Although the, the last two, two years or so have looked very different for these students, they've persevered. And I congratulate them. They should be very proud of their accomplishments and look forward to their future achievements and goals. So I want to say congratulations. Good luck to all of them. Celebrate responsibly and stay safe. Tout les maux du corsé, veux féliciter les étudiants qui vont recevoir des diplômes à la fête du mois. On sait que les deux dernières années étaient difficiles et dur pour vous autres, mais vous doivent tout être fier. Bonne chance à le futur. Amusez-vous bien, pas de celebration. Soyez-vous, a sécurité, et bonne santé. Merci. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson, for that heartfelt congratulations. Do any other counselors have anything they would like to add? To Sean's comments?
I do. So as, as a mom of one of those graduates, my, my baby's graduating from high school this year. I'll, I'll steal this spot to say congratulations to him, to Colin and all of, all of his friends and all the others as well who are graduating from high school. So it's a pretty proud moment for a parent. And so I, I guess I would also, you know, maybe expand that to also include, you know, I think we're thinking about high school graduates right now because it's June. But of course, as an instructor at N S C C, I can't help but think about all of the folks who've graduated from post secondary as well this spring and April and congratulate them as well and, and hope that they find Richmond County to still be their home. Perhaps they're coming back for work or will continue to look at employment opportunities here as they continue on in the future.
That's great. Well said, Melanie.
Yes, very well said. Yeah, very well said, Counselor Melanie Sampson. And I too agree. You look on Facebook and you see nurses coming back to our area. You see, just today I was reading on Facebook, paramedic, a young girl who, who graduated from paramedic school and returning home, and nurses returning home, you know, welders, carpenters, millwrights, they should all be very proud of themselves. And again, the last couple of years have been difficult for everybody and they should be very proud of their achievements for sure.
Absolutely. All right. Are there any further comments? Okay. So thank you, Counselor Sean Sampson and Counselor Melanie Sampson for those remarks. I'll move us on to the next item on our agenda, which is the review of checks issued for May 2021. And I'll open it for discussion with council if, if you have any questions regarding any of those checks.
So Madam Warden, I don't have any for May, but just to bring up one if I can. For March the 11th, there was a check issued for $92 to seaside, seaside massage therapy. Can we get a little bit of insight on why we, we would write a check, I guess, to seaside massage therapy?
Dawn, did you want to?
I can look into it. I suspect it's, it's related to workplace wellness and, and I, I wouldn't want to speculate on what the $92 was, but I, I can find out and, and get the, the exact details on it and provide the, provide an email to council tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, that would be great. I would, I would, yeah, because I would be dismissed in thinking that if it was a massage that I were, that I were.
I can assure you it wasn't a massage because massages are covered through medical benefits. So it certainly wouldn't be paying anybody a massage.
That's what.
I suspect it might be, it might be expenses associated with that individual.
Okay.
Yeah, if, okay.
If you can get, yeah, that's great. Yep.
Are there any other? Thank you, Deputy Warden. Are there any other questions regarding the checks in May? Okay. So hearing none, I'll move us on to the next item on our agenda, which was items added. And I believe we had one, which was, oh, back to the deputy warden regarding the island wide garbage initiative.
Yeah. So I don't know, I'm not sure if this is gonna, again, because it was in the midst of everything going on, if it just kind of got, I guess, brushed underneath the rug or if it kind of didn't, wasn't brought to the table. But maybe, maybe our C A O can shed a little bit of light on this because I think, I'm pretty sure he, it was him that attended the, the discussion in Wyckonaw. And it was, it was just all the, I believe if I'm not mistaken, it was all the counties within, you know, C B R M, Wyckonaw, Inverness, or, you know, Richmond, just with an island wide garbage initiative. So I'm just wondering if maybe our C A O can give us a little bit of feedback on that or if it's something that, you know, we are supposed to engage in or.
Okay. So that was actually the, the, the second meeting that I had attended and, and it was in, it was in, it was in relation to our current situation with respect to garbage being sent to Geisborough and seen and, you know, understanding if, whether or not there was an opportunity within the island of Cape Breton for municipalities to gather together to provide that service. So during those two meetings, there, there really wasn't anything finalized. It appears as though there really isn't anything to go forward with regarding that initiative. And of course, we've already signed a, an agreement with Geisborough to, to discuss our future garbage requirements. So we're going to go forward with that. That was brought to, to the council table some time ago. So we did already discuss that part of it. Right now, the, the situation with the island initiative seems to be at a standstill right now. And we may be able to take advantage of economies of scale throughout all the regions with respect to if, if there's a purchase related to composters, if there's purchases related to any kind of things that we could purchase as a group. But I, I don't, at this point in time, there, there has been no solid future on an initiative with all the municipalities with regard to our garbage.
Okay. That's a really interesting idea though down the road is to maybe find some economies of scale if we can get, you know, partner together. That's, that's exciting. Deputy Warden, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, no, just because I noticed in the email when they reached out, they were looking for, I guess, for council support. I guess it, it seemed like either in the way of funding or, and I just, I just kind of remiss that it wasn't brought to our attention. And I, and I do understand that we had signed an agreement with, with Geisborough. It's just, I'm wondering, was this, was this discussed, I guess, was, was the first initial meeting prior to us signing the agreement with Geisborough County or was it after?
The first meeting with this group, are you referring to?
Yeah.
So it was around the same time and, and at that point in time, there were several municipalities that hadn't signed their, their, their agreement yet. So after that meeting, they pretty much all signed. So it looks like there's going to be an involvement there with, with Geisborough.
Okay. Okay. Other?
Sorry. So, so is this something that we're not interested in pursuing, Dawn? Or is it something that all of the counties are not interested in pursuing, your knowledge or is it?
I, I don't know what counties have, have agreed to be part of a countywide initiative to. It's, it's very vague. So there's not really anything that's in stone. It's just, it's just all verbal. There's, there is no actual formal agreement. There is no, there, there are no items that are written down that says this is what we can provide. So until that time comes, I, I would, I would not take anything counsel for, I, I really wouldn't be able to explain to you what it is because nothing is written down.
Okay. And then.
If they had a set of parameters that they wanted to get involved in some sort of agreement that we, we would sign to, for example, take advantage of economies of scale to buy, you know, X amount of composters or, or things like that. I mean, there are, there are other options as well where, where some, some municipalities bring their compostable items, their crab shells or whatnot to Sydney. Well, we don't do that. We, we keep ours in-house and we compost them. So there are some things that we wouldn't take advantage of. It's, it's just, it's just, and we don't do curbside composting. We don't have that. We have backyard composters. So there's very little for us to take advantage of. But until there's something that's written down that, that we can, you know, see, that we could take advantage of, well then, until that time comes, then I, I, I really don't think that there's a need to bring it to the council table.
Okay. All right. So are there any questions from other counselors regarding this matter? Okay. All right. So I think that kind of brings us to the end of our agenda. And I guess we're open now for our 15 minute question period. So this is a committee of the whole question period. It's not restricted to items on the agenda. And you can phone in, but we do have some rules of engagement related to that. And I don't know, Yvonne, if you'd mind scrolling down just a little bit. But any member of the public could ask a question on any item. And it does say 10 minutes there, but at, at committee of the whole, it is 15 minutes. And I thought I had sent that correction through, but we, I must have missed that one. So you do need to identify yourself and ask your question. So we'll just leave it open for the next, the next period of time for questions from gallery. I don't know, Yvonne, do we have any at this point?
There are no questions right now.
Okay. So maybe we'll just give it a minute, recognizing we're not the only ones that have technical difficulties from time to time. All right. So if there's no questions coming up, none by phone, then I guess we'll move on to our, to our in camera session, which I don't believe we require this evening. So we look for a motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening.
Excuse me, Warden?
Oh, yes.
I, I, I guess we were sort of holding off on, on this, on the Sean Luker presentation to see if he would come back in towards the night. You know what I mean? But so I guess I just want to ensure that we reach out to him, to reschedule him, although I know we're probably quite booked up. But, you know, I, I suspect something came up if he was planning to be here and then wasn't. So.
Yeah, yeah. Something must have come up, especially where Yvonne said that he was in touch with like 15 minutes prior, right? So something must have gone sideways probably with the connection. But.
Because he's definitely not here, right?
No, he's not here. I've been checking.
All right. Yeah. I just didn't want to adjourn before we just triple check that he wasn't here and that we reach out to him. And yeah.
Great point. So could, Dawn, I guess, could we ask staff to follow back up with Sean to see if he could attend another time?
Yeah, I'm sure Yvonne can do that. She'll, she'll reach out to him. I'm sure they'll connect.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. All right. So any, any other final discussion on that, I guess? If not, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Okay. Deputy, Deputy Warden, I think I heard you first and then was it Counselor Melanie Sampson? Oh, wait now, Counselor Brent Sampson. It's a race at the end. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. So that motion is carried. So thanks a lot, everyone. Have a great evening.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, guys.
See you soon. Bye.